Good morning.
Morning Sarah. Heard you had a few dead or with me tonight. We did, uh, some 50 or 60 people there I would say. Yeah, I was at uh, Eden, but I think I forgot to pay the papers.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's about, that's about the number. But it's a different group than came to, that usually comes to my quarterly meetings.
What do you have in mind? Is he not a secretary?
Who are you?
Yeah.
What, no, what is this?
Uh, there was a collection on units.
It looks all different.
Yeah. For actually frontline, uh, and self-responsibility. I was leading there, giving, I, I'll do they do.
How you doing?
This is the registration.
And if I read and go play Ryan, I was probably the only one.
Oh, she got probably, dude. They hired, two or so over there. So much.
Yeah. I'm. I was around here.
Oh.
She said, I, I don't see.
She had.
It'll be, I have to say what she. To happen.
She had this.
Oh, when you brought it in. Wow.
And she misspelled. Twentypound, our down base. Or something.
Next for the weeks. Yeah. Yeah, there, I'm there.
Don't worry about that. Oh, it's good to be here. It's uh, it's a very exciting. It is. Well, she told us, okay. Good morning. Are you, I'm good, you alright? Good, I'll see you tomorrow. Of course tomorrow night. I wouldn't advise that. Probably there, yes. She missed both things last time. I have a few things to say that nobody will listen to. I can't even get the grants list on here, I mean. Is that all about? They don't have your page, so it's all the work. What's that all about? It's a land of opportunity, do anything you want to, isn't it? That's. You're living proof of that.
Well.
Know your story. Good morning, how you doing? So far, so good, just hadn't got very far. Absolutely. Any, was that you mowing the bank yesterday? First. Was that you mowing the bank yesterday? So this guy, such like. No, is it? Oh, yeah, he did, he just mowed it. Maybe you're a nuisance to the person, very low. Nice thing. Had issues. Very well. Because that call basically. He had to work. I'm just not. That was me and I went mowing. No, I got done it. But we got, yeah, my cemetery is mowed, they were. Passionate. It's so, it's hard to play up. Yeah, I, I, I got caught up yesterday. Well. Right, go with the. Morning man.
The church of mine.
Uh, that church of.
Yeah. Riding in pencil.
Yes, yes. The greatest, everybody. Good, how are y'all? We're gonna rise. Chris. Are you coming to that meeting today at the, at the uh, New Testament Church out there? About that? Did you give me an invite? Okay. Yeah. I'm going. I was very anxious. I know they reached out. I think that he said, shall I send something? There, it has, there was like three reservoirs.
Nope, it's nine o'clock. It's. Would you please stand? I've asked Adam Muffleroy from First United Methodist Church to open us in our location this morning. Thank you.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this day and for our county. Uh, we ask that you continue to bless it and move uh, through it and help our county to be a place uh, that thrives and that lives uh, under your kingdom. We give you thanks this day uh, for your presence with us. We ask that you bless our county commissioners and our county judge Lord, create them wisdom and discernment, uh, guide them and lead them uh, in your truth. Uh, bless this our, uh, this meeting in uh, the, with the presence of your Holy Spirit. Uh, that through your spirit, we may be led to find and seek uh, your will. It is, it is in Jesus' name that we do pray. Amen.
Amen, thanks. All right, pledges to the flag, American flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag.
Our United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You made. All right, follow this meeting to order at nine oh two AM, we have a forum present, all the commissioners and myself are here. Uh, general announcements. Do we have any general announcements? I do, we have two, we have conducted two town hall meetings in precinct two and precinct four. And we have two more to go and uh, Thursday afternoon or evening, six PM. We will have one in precinct one at the Grand Flamingo Chamber Pavilion. And then uh, next Monday, uh, precinct three at the Will's Point Chamber, we'll have uh, uh, the town hall meetings. So any other general announcements? All right, public comments? I've got one, do you have any more? Okay, all right, we have a, uh, Mr. Ronnie Jones is uh, is going to speak on items three, twelve, and, well, three is public comments. Twelve, uh, which is the L three Harris contract, uh, milestone payment and fourteen, which is the uh, uh, Paul Michael contract for property located nineteen thirty North Trade Thesaurus. Ronnie, you're up.
Item, what is going to be the same, general comment on item three all the time? A lot more appropriate if we got to speak when you got to that topic item. Instead of having to guess what y'all are going to say and what we say. And we may be going different directions. But item twelve, I had not heard why we're spending a half a million dollars for something. But I don't know what it is. And because I wasn't at the meeting, when I heard, oh, what's up, first y'all did. I would, I would like for y'all to discuss it in open court today, so everybody knows we're just spending the five hundred thousand dollars. Item number fourteen. Goes back to the Paul Michaels deal and the wording in this says that you're going to consider. And looking for the word and finding. Anyway, of some options that you have in the contract, that the judge is going to make a decision and he can do it any way he wants to do it. And I don't agree with that. We're going to pay four plus million dollars to buy, if that's what you're talking about. Then the whole commissioner court has the right to know what those are. And unless y'all come and close doors and you all know what that is. That's illegal. You need to do it before the public. That's my opinion. And I talked to Austin, it's also Austin's opinion. That you do that. So all I'm saying is. And you have done that very well in most cases. I will say that. Once you get into that area, y'all left. All the commissioners talk and eventually we dummies sitting out here that's paying the bill. We pay for all of that stuff. Uh, we get the idea that we don't have any opinions or we don't have a say whatsoever in what y'all do. As long as three of you get together and do it. It's a done deal. Well, hi, promoting with both the legislature, house and senate to change that rule, where it takes more than three of you to do that. I want it totally unanimous. All of you have to agree to it. Then we can all look at all of y'all and say, y'all are through enough. You need to look at this and you need to give the people the choice of how you spend our money. And right now, we don't have a choice. You do it just like the Paul Michaels building. I found out about that after the fact, started out in six million dollars. Got down to four point one million. Then it was four point two million. Now, I don't know what you're paying for. Y'all do evidently. So you need to let us know what you do. And I am not against buying the Paul Michaels building for the right reasons. And lack of space is one of them. But it's not just to build a new courthouse. It's excess capacity to the courthouse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ronnie, appreciate that. All right, is there any other, other comments? All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda, item number four. Uh, we're going to uh, consent agenda items that are considered routine by the commissioners court will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless county judge or commissioner request an item to be removed, consent agenda considered separately. And I would like to uh, ask that the uh, item B, discuss consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Be moved to the very last agenda item before adjournment, because some items in our agenda may actually be in that, that. Uh, but, so I'm asked to move that down there. Uh, uh, as far as the other items, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
A motion.
All right, is there a second? Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Aye, pose like sign, motion passes, item number five. Uh, discuss consider sheriff's department converting two vehicles from exempt registration to regular registration due to the vehicles being unmarked units and authorize county judge to sign all related documentation. Does anybody here, all right, I will, uh, the sheriff's department has two unmarked vehicles and they are requesting to go to an uh, uh, regular place, not ones that say exempt, to try to help uh, identify them as unmarked. And so uh, there's a process to go through that and we have to apply to the state. While they're still exempt from taxes, they're, they're, they don't say that on, on the plates. So these two vehicles, uh, the paperwork has been submitted for that to be done. Uh, and is there a motion to allow us, uh, sheriff's department to convert two vehicles from exempt registration to regular registration due to the vehicles being unmarked?
Uh, motion to uh, convert these and uh, have the county judge sign related documents.
All right, motion is made, there's a second?
I'll see.
Motion made, second, any further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes, item number six. Discuss and consider renewal of the county healthcare plan for employees through the Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefit Pool and authorize the county judge to sign all associated documents. Okay, I believe Kathy is here to make a presentation.
Good morning, um, we also have with us, uh, your brother, um, Dan, and, um, would you like to go first?
Sure. Um, Jessica, your expert in your HR, wanted you to know what a basis is, um, was for our grandfather plan. And she's going to be discussing rates on that. So, good room.
Good morning.
This is Dan Miller. And my position is sales within hallmark, but my passion is consulting. So I left you a note of this, so I don't have to read this off to you. Can get a general information, you also have something to refer back to. Basically, um, back when Affordable Care Act was signed into law in twenty ten. You'll remember the president at that time said, you can, if you like your insurance, you can keep it to half. That is basically what a grandfather plan is. It means that those, um, plans uh, cannot be changed. And it does not have the mandates, the taxes and the fees in there that uh, a Affordable Care Act plan does have. Another main thing is because it cannot be changed, the Affordable Care Act has to have metallic plans, gold, silver, platinum, bronze. And each year, but to meet those, and I cannot even tell you what that means, that they have to meet those categories. But to meet those categories, plans change, if not every year, every other year. I've seen a plan have copays on drugs and also negligence, insurance and low copays. So what, um, Jessica wants to ensure is that we, you do not lose the, um, rich benefits that you have, the lower deductibles, the lower max out of pockets, your max out of pockets, your financial claims you have, so that you don't have to worry about that three hundred thousand dollar fund. But like I said, I'm not going to go into reading this. If you have any question, that you read it, had any questions, I'd be glad to answer. I just wanted to let you know what grandfather was, so that when Ms. Kathy is talking to you about these plans and rates, do you know what she's. The question?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
No, appreciate it.
Um, regarding the renewal for Vansant County. Um, y'all are just one of two hundred and thirty-two counties or groups in the state of Texas that are participating in our pool. Our membership is a little under fifty thousand, that gives us a lot of buying capital. Um, where we can negotiate, uh, admin fees, rates, things such as that. Unfortunately, it also, in the pool, we take what you pay in and we have to call it contributions, because we're not an actual insurance company. But basically, it's the same thing as your plan. We take that money that y'all pay each month to actually pay the plans for Vansant County. Now, because you're part of that pool, your renewal rate is also based on how well overall the pool is doing. So this year, the, the pool as a whole, whenever we take everybody's plans in together, did not operate as well as we typically do. We wanted to, we were a little bit higher. Um, for those of us like myself that work with multiple different groups, back in the spring, I wanted to go on an extended vacation. Uh, because it was looking really, really stupid. Our cancer claimants are the ones that are driving the high cost claims for the pool as of right now. Our total cancer claimants over the last year increased by six percent. That's, that's, that's huge. It means we've got an issue in Texas counties of cancer starting to creep back in. Overall, our high cost claimants and for the pool, high cost claimants are claimants that their claims reach uh, at least a hundred thousand dollars. That is possible, especially with the cost of medications that we're seeing. Um, it's, it's happening a lot. Uh, but we saw the increase in just the number of those claimants to hit that mark, increased by eight percent. It's, we're afraid it's going to be a rough year. Um, so what we did was whenever we got all of our underwriting information, all of our allocations done, the pool started at a six percent increase, that's where every group started at. Then we look at each group individually, looking at, um, looking at their claims, what's going on in their class. We look at whether or not they have a wellness program and for Vansant County, you do have the county specific in- incentive that is encouraging your, encouraging your employees to go get that annual physical. You're actually giving them an incentive to go and do that. And that does help curb costs over time. It's just getting the, the employees to go and do it. So we take all of those factors into consideration and for Vansant County, y'all, actually, your claims were a little bit lower than the average for the pool. Um, the, the board did assess y'all a five point seven percent increase. And what we do in this is because you are still grandfathered for all of our groups, regardless of the plans that they have. We always offer uh, one or two additional options for y'all to look at, because we, we do also know, I'm a former treasurer. I know the impact that the health insurance cost in your benefit package period has on your budget items. So we do, we automatically do that, send you two or three options and what we look at, um, because we want to make sure you have all the pieces of the puzzle. Um, I looked at this and honestly, the savings is not there to make a plan change. Um, especially not give us that grandfather status. And if y'all made a plan change, that's what y'all would be doing. Um, because we also have to look at your county employees are the best resource for the county and need to keep those in place. And whenever you start making benefit changes, that does affect them. Um, so at this point, um, and with Jessica and with the hands, it would not be my personal or professional thoughts for y'all to make a plan change, even with that five point seven percent increase.
Okay.
Okay. Um, do y'all have any questions? Um, we operate a little bit differently than most insurance companies. Um, and so we wanted, like I said, we want to make sure y'all have all of the information that John Lee. Uh, and want to make sure your questions are always answered. Um, one thing with this renewal package, um, because we use Blue Cross Blue Shield, we use their network of doctors, they process the claims for us. Um, but we use a company called Navitas who has, they specialize in government initiatives for the prescription benefits. Um, one of the changes on the prescription benefits that we are doing this year is we ran an analysis on where the bulk of our costs, our admin costs. That's something that we can control, we can, we have control over where that was going, who, which other, um, the big pharmacy benefit companies, you know, who was charging the most in those apps? Um, the individual cost of medications, we really can't control, it's those FIPS costs that we can't control. So we did an analysis and it's really interesting what came out of that analysis. You would think your smaller, local, family owned pharmacies would be a little bit more expensive. They're not. Um, it's those big box chains like Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, those. That's where the highest admin fees and things such as that are. Um, so our board looked at several options. Um, and starting October first, we are, I guess, should say kicking out the CVS pharmacies out of our network, so CVS, Albertsons, United, Kroger's, all of those fall under the CVS umbrella. Um, so if you do have employees that are getting their prescriptions filled at one of those pharmacies, they will need to, to move them to sell, utilize their coverage. Um, and what I've done, and I'll provide this with Jessica also, is run all of the pharmacies within Vansant County. And we can provide neighboring counties also. Um, but it was just really interesting that those, the small town pharmacies are where not only is the pool getting the best deal, but after talking with several other county judges, I'm from the northwest area. Um, they were the ones who were going above and beyond for the county people. Um, they actually will deliver prescriptions to people's homes. Um, and you don't typically really see that. But this is as, uh, the pharmacy network. Um, that's with, you know, Vansant County that will be available October. And like I said, we can run that, uh, anyway, and include any additional neighboring counties voting for that. Um, for the pool, making that one, that one change to our benefits, saved the pools six million dollars.
Oh.
I think that's, that's all I have, um, unless y'all have any questions.
What's the cost of our plan annually?
Um, annually, um, I would need a calculator. Um, it's going to, it's going up to nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
It's a fifty dollars a month more per employee, roughly six hundred dollars a year more employee. So, so, um, what's our, what is five point seven percent, uh, what's that dollar amount equal?
Okay, well, it's, you're currently at eight seventy-five, so it's going with the, the fifty.
It's an, what's the cost to the county on the program?
Uh, as far as what your claims are running or, I'm, I'm not.
How much does the county pay every month? Uh, in order to have insurance coverage for the, for the people who work here?
Uh, how many employees do y'all have?
I bet it changes every month, just depending on how.
It does, because it's on a part in full week purpose.
It, can you give me an approximate? Is it two hundred dollars a month that would, the county pays toward insurance or is it ten thousand dollars a month the county pays toward insurance?
You pay each month, just on average, um, about a hundred and seventy thousand.
Per month? Yeah.
With a hundred and seventy-nine employees.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, so the, uh, so the county incurs a five point seven percent increase and the employee incurs, or do we split that five point seven percent increase?
Would be if you started charging county employees for the benefits, even a portion of the benefits, that's an automatic loss of grandfather status.
So the county pays the entirety of the five point seven?
Boy, boy portion, yes.
At the employee, yes.
Right.
So, um, have, have we considered, and this might be a better question for Jessica when she gets back, but there are services. You know, doctors don't always get the billing right. And so it changes how Blue Cross, Blue Shield and some of these pay these, uh, these, these amounts. And I've worked at companies before that, uh, they, they audit the medical bills. Have we considered? Have we considered anything along those lines to just tack do that?
Yes, sir, we do. Um, currently, we had, that was part of our Blue Cross Blue Shield contract to do that. Um, and they were. Reaching out to doctors to get some of this corrected. Um, we have hired an independent contractor to do that. To make sure these, the billings are correct and it's being processed the way it should.
Yeah, that's a, it's a substantial, it was a substantial reduction in cost for the company that I was at before, so. Um, perhaps you could share with me, you can send me an email with additional information related to how that's working.
Yes, uh, we have numerous uh, groups. Large groups that are self-funded that are being allowed to do this if they want to. Um, Taylor Kemp is one of mine that is self-funded and is suddenly looking at it. Because the potential for them to do it is about a million dollar a year. So it it's quite a substantial savings and it, this would be, y'all are part of the fully insured groups. So it's just automatically included. But yes, we we are starting October first with our contracts. Moving to an independent contractor before the claims ever get to Blue Cross Blue Shield. They're hitting this one because we have, we have seen. Where we've had to go to a, an arbiter to get some of this fixed.
And and the county is doing that in order to, you, TAC is doing it, but Van Zant County is doing it in order to save costs.
Yes.
And to reduce that ten percent, that eleven percent increase, that uh, with the marketplace. Trend of eleven percent increase, we're doing that in order to reduce those costs. So we're not static, we're actually working toward reducing that a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a month. Doing everything we can in order to reduce that.
Yes.
So I think that's prudent. I I don't have any additional questions.
Uh, what, is there any status on the uh, negotiations with Krista's?
Um, that one, there's actually two negotiations and I'm sorry Jessica did. Um, and Dan both did include that in the email. Um. There's two negotiations, one with the, with the actual hospital. And then the other is with the radiologist. Those are two separate contracts. Um, Blue Cross, their negotiator, and with Krista's Hospital. Is believing that the uh, deadline for the twenty-third. Is going to be extended. Those negotiations are looking, are looking really well. And will have, that will be extended until the, the, all the paperwork can get completed. Um, they're not quite as positive with the contract negotiations with the radiologist. Uh, one thing I do want to uh, always remind in uh, members. In this, if something should happen where the Chris's Hospital does go out of network with Blue Cross for even a little while. Um, they still get the in, they still get insurance coverage going. It just not, does not pay as much. The network out of network benefit just does not pay as much. Uh, but Blue Cross is, I got an update from them on Friday and they're. They're pretty confident that our contract will be signed.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Catherine? All right, thank you very much. All right, so is there a motion to renew the county healthcare plan for employees who text association of counties? Health and employee benefit pool and authorize county judge to assign associated documents?
My motion.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made, second. Is there any other uh, uh? Conversation? If not, all those in favor say aye. I'll oppose like sign. Motion passes. And I would like to say that uh, uh, Jessica is. In the Virgin Islands right now, can't join us, but she says she's watching live, so hi Jessica. All right, item number seven, workshop, discuss strategies to reduce or eliminate section eight housing developments in Van Zant County.
We're gonna pass on this today, your honor.
Okay, very good. Uh, item number eight, discuss consider board appointments for E S D two. Um, where is it? Uh, I believe we is, uh, we have gotten a. Uh, appointment.
Application or?
We've got the application to appoint, uh. Uh, appoint Kelly Walker to the E S D. Uh, number one or two, E S D two. Uh, Board of Directors and this was sent to us by uh, Jeremy Barker. So, are there any questions? The application is in in the packet. If not, is there a motion to approve uh, Kelly Walker uh, for the E S D two Board of Directors?
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll say.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number nine, discuss consider district attorney's office converting two vehicles from exempt registration to regular registration. Due to the vehicles being unmarked units and authorize county judge to assign all related documentation, this is. Uh, identical to what we just discussed in the pa- past on item number five with the sheriff's department, if these two vehicles. Are owned by the district attorney's office. So, is there, is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number ten, discuss consider an M O U, that's a memorandum of understanding with Calendar Lake H O A, which is. Uh.
Homeowners.
Homeowners Association, thank you.
Uh, yes, I put this on there. Uh. The president of the Counter Lake Homeowners Association, they're trying to get their, their roads in shape and some other stuff done. And we're looking for some help and this is basically like an interlocal agreement with the cities, except this is not a government entity. So we wanna do an M O U to where they could get the material at the county's cost, they do the labor. Um, they do everything, but um, we can save them some money by having them. Um, have the cost of the material at the county's cost and that way it would save them a little money, so they wouldn't have to pay for it on, at their cost, so. Um, I would like to make a motion to, to have an M O, M O U signed with Calendar Lake for that, for that agreement.
Okay, well, we can't sign it because we don't have, it doesn't exist.
To move forward with.
To move, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, to create an M O U.
Create an M O U, there we go.
I'll second that.
All right. So, motion has been made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, motion passes. That it basically mimic what we have with the cities.
Yeah, it's basically interlocal agreements, if you can have interlocal agreement with, with, with the private entities.
Okay. All right, number eleven, discuss, uh, consider and approve one six-month lease agreement and payment concerning the belly dump trailer for Brads' trailers. For precinct three.
Yeah, Judge, this is my, I put it on here, uh, I have one of my belly dumps that the lease is, it's come up to be re- renewed. And uh, that, that lease is uh, it's a six-month lease and it's fifteen hundred dollars, six months. And I would like to make a motion that we accept that.
I'll second, I'll second that.
All right. Motion has been made and second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, motion passes and you already have.
So basically that, you get a pretty new trailer.
I get a brand new trailer every six months.
Yeah, so the only thing you really required to deal with is tires and.
Well.
And you don't, you don't wear the tires out, so basically you get a new trailer every six months.
Yeah, now, now if we tear up the tar. For some reason, we have to pay for that. You know, and I've had one of those tore up. In five and a half months, so.
But this, you have others, uh.
I have three of them.
You have three of them, so this is. Okay. All right.
And the reason, and the reason we have them is because it saves us a lot of time. I mean, you're, you're taking two to three dump truck loads into one belly dump and plus when you're. When you're working with them, you get a, a better quality job than what the dump truck can give you as far as that on the road, so it's a good deal.
All right, item number twelve, discuss consider approving L three Harris milestone payment B. Uh, one point, uh, B point, one point five for hardware installation in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, sixty-one cents. Uh, in nineteen twenty-two, uh, the uh, county signed a contract with L three Harris. For a new radio system.
Two thousand twenty-two, yeah.
I'm sorry, nineteen, yeah. Whoa, we'd have some great contract pricing if that was the case. I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two and uh. Uh, the commission court approved the contract that was signed and we've been in the process. In that contract, they have. Milestone payments based on, the contract was for six and a half million dollars and the money is coming from the ARPA funds that we received. And uh, it's, it's been in the bank, the money is in the bank to pay for this. And uh, we have finally gotten all of the hardware. Uh, installed in the different shelters and the, at the different tower sites. And uh, we are in the process of having it what's called optimized to where it will actually work. And uh, that's gonna occur uh, first of July. So this, this uh, milestone payment was to, after getting all the uh, microwave dishes up and all the equipment into the. Shelters and uh, which occurred uh, a, about a month ago or so. So, in uh, is there any questions? Not, is there a motion to approve the milestone payment uh, for five hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents?
So, yep, and and I'll second that.
Okay, motion made. Bobby? Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss consider authorizing the county judge to sign a contract with Gardify to provide. Cloud-based software for the DA's office. Tonda left?
She did talk to me about this a week or so ago, um, we talked about it about four years ago. But we thought the Bell G D about that, uh, LGS was gonna do the same thing. But, um, I guess this actually works better for them to store their evidence and stuff on.
Okay.
Sheriff's office. Um, Tom knows more details about it than I do, but. I put the recurring in my budget request for next year.
Hmm.
And then. I think she said she would want any of the initial out of her.
Yeah, it's kinda important, or is that, uh?
Maybe we just drop this down.
Yeah, why don't we just put this on hold and we'll, we'll put it back on, bring it back up when uh. Uh, well, we need her for the next one. Um. Okay.
There, there's no, there's no, there's nothing, no questions about the radio payment, right? Basically, that was already decided a long time ago.
Yes, that was.
And that, that funding came from ARPA funds.
That's correct.
Uh, it didn't come out of tax money.
No, that was uh.
So that, this, basically, we're just paying for services that have already been provided. That, that, that we've already agreed upon, so just wanted to make that clear because there was some questions at the beginning, so.
Okay, Tonda, we're, you're up on the uh, Gardify contract.
Good morning, gentlemen. Uh, Gardify is a cloud-based software that, um. A lot of counties are using, Kaufman County is using it, uh, a lot of the C A Cs across the state are using it. Uh, to, the counties are using it to supplement the discovery process, the C A Cs are using it to secure their. Videos. I have used it in both of those applications, our C A C here in Van Zant County uses it. And I've been special prosecutor recently in Kaufman. Uh, they are using it together with their regular case management software, which is the uh, Tyler Technologies. Um, it's a system that allows for agencies to upload videos and things. Uh, to us, evidentiary items and then secures them in the cloud, it's C G S compliant. And allows us to share them with defense attorneys. Um, without ever having to print a physical disc that can get lost, that can get stolen, that can get. In the hands of the actual defendant as, as well as cost money. Um, I've been looking at Gardify, I've been looking at a couple of other systems, including the one that. Uh, L G S has recently started offering. And Gardify is the system that can, to use their words, eat any kind of video. And they've, they've proved that to me, they can take even Canton P D uses a very proprietary. Video system that no other software company has been able to. Process and use for us, um, and show us that they can do that. Um, Gardify can do it, they, um, I've been researching. For several months, probably close to six months, to find a company that can do that with any type of video because. A lot of the police agencies use different software, use different video players. Um, uh, then you have home security, then you have convenience store security, all of those things. Um, Gardify is the one that, that, um, so far has been able to do it all for us. Um, so I have negotiated with them, you can see I gave the proposal. Uh, to the county judge there, their normal price would be eighteen thousand dollars a year, that's for unlimited storage, unlimited number of cases. Um, it's as a first year promo, uh, it's twelve thousand and something a year. For this first year, I know we're in the, towards the end of a budget year. Um, I can pay this first year out of my forfeiture account, I've talked to Scott about putting it in his budget. Um, for next year and he uh, it's software that he had looked at previously, in fact, he, he and I talked about it when I very first started looking at. All of the, the various brands, um, I believe Scott's prepared to put it in his budget for the following years. But that's what I'm here today asking for, it's just permission for the county judge to sign that agreement with Gardify.
Scott, does it have other applications other than just at the DA's office or?
I believe the sheriff, the sheriff's office, I'm not sure.
Well, the sheriff's office, yes, so if I buy it, then, or the county buys it on behalf of my office. Then any law enforcement agency that I do business with anywhere gets that portal for free. And can upload all their stuff to them.
So their intake goes through that, is that a huge?
Right, they don't have to physically leave their office, drive to me, bring me a little disc in their hot little hand. And, and they just sit at their desk, drag and drop it into this software. It appears in the cloud, we get notifications and um, uh, then we can process it from there and it always stays. On Gardify, always, which. The only ones we would ever have to physically download to a disc and spend that dollar fifty or whatever a disc is. Are the ones that actually go to a jury trial where we have to admit that as a jury exhibit and that's, that, that's very, very few. Y'all know, one percent of our cases, two percent. Yeah, about two percent of our cases go to a jury trial.
Does that speed up the discovery process timeframe?
Absolutely. Right now, one of the things we get is the, the defense lawyers. I've been one, I know what they do. The, the, the defense lawyers, oh Judge, I didn't have time to go pick up that disc yet, so I need another continuance. Well, now. Soon as my office finishes processing it, they get an email in their inbox that says, your disc is ready and all they have to do is click. So yes, takes away that excuse. Yes, it's, they are fully C G S compliant, it is all secure, they, we give them, my office gives them. The authority to view it for X number of months. After those months expire, let's say the case isn't over, we can extend that. But when the case is over and we go close that in our file, their ability to view it is gone. They are also, there's no way to download, they cannot download it to their computer, they cannot download it to a disc, there is no way to download. So it is absolutely secure.
Okay, would you explain what C G S is?
Sure, C G S is criminal justice uh, information system, C G S is the. Statewide and part of the nationwide system that protects criminal history, sensitive criminal history information. Any computer, any person who operates or even views. A computer that has C G S access has to go through uh, security training. Uh, in order to know how to handle that information. Our whole server system downstairs, anything that my office, the sheriff's office is on, any other law enforcement. Agency beyond just the normal security that, that a county or a large business organization of any type would have. Has to be extra requirements. has to be extra requirements that are put on it by the FBI um and the Department of Public Safety to be compliant with all of that sensitive information because everyone's personal identifying information is in that system, so it is highly, highly, highly secure. Um LGS is CGS compliant, y'all know that's what we use for our case management. Um and Gardify is also CGS compliant.
And this is our effort to to um maintain our up-to-date and streamline our processes, I guess you could say.
Safe paper, safe, safe discs and thumb drives. I mean, literally, I buy thumb drives for my office five hundred at a time uh for discovery.
Yeah, there's no.
And they're independent.
Brand is mitigate the the flash drive issue.
Yes, yes.
All right, any further discussion? All is in favor, uh uh.
We gotta make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
And I would second.
All right, motion has been made and second, uh any further discussions? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those pose like sign, motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss consider options concerning a contract with Paul Michael with the property located at nineteen thirty North Trade Days Boulevard, Canton, Texas seven five one oh three. And authorize county judge to sign all related documents. So, where should we go? Okay, yeah, it sees a uh uh Tonda's uh, I'm basically, what I believe is we have three options at the current time today. Uh option number one is to do nothing and let the contract lapse and lose our sixty thousand dollars that we paid upfront. Option number two would be to go ahead and uh uh pay for the building and uh execute the contract and option three would be uh renegotiate the existing contract for the facility.
Uh legally, I believe those are your three options now. Previously, the court had authorized me to explore those negotiations um for extending the contract into the next budget year. I have done that through uh Paul Michael's real estate agent, y'all know Sam Dean. Um Sam was supposed to send me the 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 contract last night that he and his client arrived at, um and I'm trying to get get it printed off on Christie's computer so y'all can actually see it. But it's the same contract, the Texas Real Estate uh Commission Commercial Contract. The changes, I believe the gate y'all had had instructed me to ask for was November fifteenth um to get us. Fifteenth, that was to get us well into the next budget year, get everything financially lined out, have it properly budgeted for. Um so when I went to Sam, um he said that his client is not happy, number one. But number two, that puts four months of taxes, insurance and interest payments on his client that he wasn't anticipating because he was anticipating this um closing before July first. So he calculated and and I have no way to check his calculations because I'm not privy to that information that's privileged to their side, or at least not all of the calculations. But he calculated his insurance costs, his taxes cost and his interest cost for those four months. And it came to a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars and some change. So basically, you know, if we, if you elect to um extend this contract to November fifteenth, he wants not only the sixty thousand dollars that already has been put up as earnest money. He wants another hundred thousand put up as earnest money. That will basically cover the additional, not the first months that it was under contract, but his costs for the additional months that it would be under contract.
And that money would go towards the cost of the building.
The hundred thousand would.
Yeah. It actually means a hundred and sixty.
The hundred thousand would.
So we lose sixty and fifty-eight.
Yes.
I didn't have it.
That's my understanding of the contract he was going to send, and like I said, I'm trying to get it printed, but. His other option that that he talked about was increasing the price by a hundred thousand, I talked him out of that.
Well, I think we should, I I think we should look at the at what they send back.
Yeah, if y'all want to move this to the end, get it.
I think that's prudent.
I I'd like to just set up a a special commissioner court meeting to discuss it. Once we have have the contract and have a chance to review it, I don't know.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, that.
And I've got other other items that need to go onto a special session, so it's not a single, single issue.
They didn't get back to me with their final answer till about five-thirty last night. And I've been waiting for the contract and forgot my phone this morning. So I couldn't forward it to Christie to print for me, so I'm trying to get into my email on her computer.
You have till July the first?
Yes.
So we have.
We have uh.
Do we, can we set a a a special meeting for Wednesday and next week? Would that be sufficient time to?
After the budget workshop?
Yeah.
Let's see.
Okay, we'll set it for uh uh Wednesday and next week, we'll determine the time uh. Cause our budget workshops go to noon, so I guess we'll do it at at two?
Is that going to be an executive session or?
No.
Okay.
I think you should do it for Wednesday.
I I kind of think so too, I I think that uh.
It's on Monday.
I, yeah, I'd pre, yeah, let me see. Got to see, oh.
We gotta get the agenda uh agenda items done uh so they can be posted three days in advance, so.
Well, the month you can, if you, well, we know we need this.
We got a holiday tomorrow.
Yeah, we could do it on, we could do it Tuesday. Would be, would be preferable. I've got a hair appointment on Monday. No, 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 I really don't, but I but I think that they do run into some difficulty with the seventy-two hour with their hardest provisions, so.
I say it as quick as we can.
I'd I'd prefer Tuesday uh over Wednesday, best on that though, Judge, if if that's okay for you, depending on what your schedule is.
Okay.
We have a lot of period to begin it, I wonder.
Can we do it today's Wednesday, we can do it Monday, right?
We could do it Monday if we have it posted today.
She'll post it today.
I need everything, Brian, if it's afternoon, I can't post it.
We'll have.
All right, you'll have it, agenda items. So, okay, so it's Tuesday at noon or at uh, do we want to do it noon?
Monday.
Monday. All right. Okay, special session, very good. So that means we're we're tabling, we're not going to uh move forward on item number fourteen today. Item number fifteen, discuss consider acceptance of a donation from Cherry Wheeler in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for the work on Van Zant County Road thirty-eight eleven, located in precinct three.
Yes, Judge, this is one that I put on there and uh I'd like to thank Mr. Wheeler for being here uh today. Uh he has uh bought some property out there and uh this is a fifteen-hundred-foot dead-end road that fronts his property. And uh it's it's not the best of shape and he's volunteered to pay a hundred thousand dollars to have it rebuilt. And uh I've 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 agreed with him. And I make a motion and he has already written me a hundred thousand dollar check, he gave it to Keegan, it's been deposited. It's, it's on note, all I'm doing is asking y'all to accept this. So I make a motion that we accept this hundred thousand dollar donation for for this county road of thirty-eleven.
Second, all right, motion made and second, uh picture, so what kind of warranty you gonna get?
I'm only gonna be able to agree to this, can you move to precinct four?
So he he's been a, it's been a pleasure to work with too, he's he's just, he's about to move. And I I appreciate what he's done and what he's doing.
Okay.
Do you have a specific criteria of how you're gonna do that? I mean, like what's expected? Are you doing, are you doing the work?
No, I'm I'm contracting to that.
Okay, so you're not, you're not responsible for anything, so.
Well, if we we were, we were going to uh uh we're basically going to move the road over five foot. And so that we get a little more territory on one side of it. And he has given us ten more foot of easement for the road. So, so we're moving it up so that we get good road. And we were uh initially gonna do the the ditch work, move the road over, do the base work and everything. But with the weather we've had, the rain and everything, it's set me back on so much other stuff that we already had planned to do, that Terry and I discussed it this morning. I'm gonna meet with a contractor and see what it's gonna cost us to have them to just do it all. And we were hoping to get it done for him by August, mid-August. And it don't appear that that's gonna happen if I have to do it, so we're looking at at this other route.
Well, it has warmed up.
Yes, yeah, oh, we're we're rocking and rolling, but it's.
I know, I know.
Did you get a second?
Yes, motion has been made and second, any further discussion? All is in favor of accepting the donation from Terry Wheeler in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for rubber work on Van Zant County Road thirty-eight eleven, located precinct three, say aye. Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number sixteen, discuss consider approval of Falconwood Edition Subdivision Plant located in Van Zant County Road thirty-eight eleven and precinct three.
Yeah, Judge, this is another one of mine, this is with Mr. Wheeler. Uh this is the subdivision that that road is is part of. And uh there's there's fourteen tracks there, there are seventy-four point six eight acres. Uh they all are road frontage to thirty-eight eleven. And they're ranging from one point seven two acres, I believe that's right, to two uh twenty-two point forty-one in size. And all rigs have been made and everything's been taken care of through uh Brian Abbott and Keegan and I. And uh again, I'd like to say it's a pleasure doing work with you, I wish all of it was that easy and to work with. Uh but I make a motion that we accept this.
Second.
All right, motion made ma-made by Commissioner Philip, seconded by Commissioner Barton. Uh any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh all is opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number seventeen, discuss consider authorizing county judge to sign a resolution for the county clerk's office to receive a HAVA grant funding for electronic poll books, to upgrade electronic poll books.
And that's ours, if you want to go ahead and give a little. Okay, so we're on polls and which is what we check everybody in when we do elections. We come in, you know, you sign up, give us your driver's license, our poll pads are on the seventeenth of April, I believe.
We're on the seventeenth, they're generation six iPads and they're on the seventeen seventeen point five, so the last update we did. And it sounds, or we got a email from knowing who is the vendor we have the poll passed through saying the app will no longer support that sixth-generation iPads passed update seventeen. So we're on the verge where they're out of date and won't be upgraded, uh which causes a security concern.
Yeah, that's more than ten years old, aren't they?
They are.
Generation six?
No, we got um my first year back here, so we got them in eighteen.
Okay.
So we've had them for seven years.
Okay. And how many poll pads were?
We have thirty-eight, we want to increase it to forty so that we have additional for curbside during early voting.
Okay, and and how much is that grant? Does the grant go pay for it all?
It will pay for most of it, uh the grant is for forty-two thousand eight five hundred, the county has to match eighty-five hundred. And our quote for the forty poll pads, paces, printers, everything is forty-five thousand six hundred and fifty.
And we'll be using to match, because we got to match.
The eighty-five hundred.
Eighty-five hundred. Using our chapter nineteen. What's that?
So if they give us forty-two five and we have to match eighty-five, that's fifty-one thousand, where's the other? Forty, forty-four hundred, where we're gonna, where we gonna spend that at, where you, the grant money?
We have chapter nineteen funds through the state.
Oh, that is, okay.
For that difference.
Okay.
So the quote is forty-five?
Forty-five sixty.
And the grant is forty-two? And we have to match eighty-five, so we got to call it eleven.
Do I?
Eleven thousand, what we have to call it?
No, they pay eighty-five hundred, but they're only gonna pay um about thirty-eight thousand, so that leaves forty-five hundred dollars of the grant which they're gonna use on chapter.
Okay, okay.
Any further discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Oh wait, I need a motion, yes.
I'd motion to approve.
Second.
All right, uh. Motion has been made and second, all those in favor now say aye.
Aye.
All of the pose like sign. All right, now we move back to uh discuss and consider bills for payment as submitted. There are several bills that got pulled at the last minute that need to be paid, so we will add that to our uh agenda for the Monday meeting at noon to to approve those bills for payment. Okay, so, but is there a motion to approve the bills that have been submitted for payment uh as submitted?
Motion to approve bills as submitted?
Second.
All right, motion been made and second, and any further discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes, very good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Like motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor, say aye. Pose like sign, motion passes, we are adjourned at ten AM. I got something else I have to, I got something else I have to, let me do this in a minute. At noon, yes, okay.
We may update it.
I barely made it.
You got a close decision?
Get your question answered, Ronnie?
Thanks, sir.
Contracts on four point two.
Yes. Oh, we're not gonna make a decision on whether or not we're going to, that's cool, so much. When we see what the updated contract is.
Are you star, you all right?
We just, you just got it done. Understood, understood.
I would like a, I would like a clear plan.